I was born ready. Just don't ask my wife. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 24th Board of Selectments meeting. We're just coming out of a paperwork review and we're gonna start with the pledge allegiance. So rise.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Not doing O Canada.
What's that?
We're not doing O Canada.
O Canada?
We're not doing it?
For today? Is that what we're doing? All right, first up would be the review and approval consent items. In tonight's consent folder, we have an AP manifest for November 18th for $68,782.16, for November 25th for $38,809. We have payroll manifest for November 20th for $67,740.71, and November 26th for $65,582.78. We have a tax collector reconciliation for October, and we have a town clerk reconciliation for October. And then last, we have a building inspector code enforcement letter to KBT Realty, which I think we've already seen before, so. So I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gannon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Queenen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 4-0-0. Request for any additional, any additional items to be added for tonight? I know we have some abatements to add.
Yeah, we have one with the request from resident John Hayes for Remote Airplane Control Club.
Okay.
Would you like me to read these for the agenda? These abatements or?
Yeah. Yeah, we need a motion. So there's a motion for adding Remote Control John Hayes, right?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Oh.
Second by Mr. Gannon. Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0-0. That'll be added to the bottom of the agenda. Next up will be the other agenda, madam. You wanna do that, Kim?
Sure. Abatement map six lot 53, interest only, July bill. $171.39 did not receive tax bill. Abatement, this is the second abatement is abatement map one lot seven, $971. Abatement number three is map three lot 36, $2,202. Abatement four, map two lot 86, $1,020. And abatement five is map four lot 10, $2,417.
Do I have a second?
Somebody.
Second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 4-0-0. So they'll show up at the, we can slide it and we do the other payment conversation. So first, public input will be happen no earlier than 6:45. That's your cue every now and then, 6:45? You can come up now. Yeah, I was getting out of the way.
You have to open it.
Yep, I'm up, I'm gonna make a motion while, I'm moving with public input, so Renee, if you'd like to identify yourself.
Good evening, board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Renee Thoreau, I live on 311 Charles Bancroft Highway. I'm here to discuss the project on 520 Charles Bancroft Highway, which has been under construction for a few weeks now. That is the gas station. I kinda make, wanna make, kind of like, I guess, a public announcement of where we're at with the project and where it's going. I started this project, developing it about nine years ago. Me and my family think it would be a good thing for the town. And it's been a long road. It's been a difficult road, but we got here and we're here. Everybody's noticed the construction going on. To give it the best chance of success, we decided to sell the project to a company called the Rankle Oil, which that's what they do. They are, they specialize in gas stations. They run really nice facilities. They have a really good chance of doing a really nice job and the best chance of success long-term for the project. So that's what's, that's who's building it and who's owning it. We were, we would have thought about doing it, but we felt that it would have been better if professional people do it and run the facility. The scheduled to be done in May of 2026, barring any unforeseen issues or problems. It looks like it should be on track for that. So it's just more of an updating, cause in this town, I get peppered with a lot of questions from a lot of different people from all sides. I thought it'd be just easier to just say it publicly. I don't do Facebook or any of those things, so I thought this would be the best way to let the town know what's going on. If there's any questions or anything, we're happy to answer them. I do wanna thank a lot of people in this town that supported us along the way. Rob Leary was one of them. During the low point in 2020, when with COVID, I seriously considered banning the project, but Rob came up to me and thought that should continue it on, cause it would be a good thing for the town. I think the town needs it. I think it would be a nice spark of energy for this town. Progress, get some development in here in this town. I've been in this town for, my family and I have run a family, I've lived here for over 30 years. My family's run a business here for over 40, almost 45 years, so we have a lot of deep roots in this town and I care a lot about this town, so we felt that would be the best thing for the town. So I hope a lot of people agree, and if they don't, well, can't make everybody happy. So.
Any questions or anything?
Yeah, the, I was at the planning board when they came forward.
Yeah.
I believe the overall, that it's gonna change a little bit about the layout. It was gonna come closer to the road or something, but then it was gonna be.
Right, there was, there was, this is a very expensive venture.
Oh, yeah, I could imagine.
When we were, when we decided to enter negotiations in ultimately the Rankle Oil, what, all they did was they just made the building a little bit smaller, and they moved a little bit closer to the road by like 10, 15 feet to make less impact on the wetlands, cause we were butting the wetlands, right there. So in doing that, there was some really good cost savings for them. Like, I don't know the amount, I'm just guessing, like, almost half a million dollars. Just, just making some simple modifications saved a lot of money on this project.
And it'll be a gas station. Is it still gonna be a Dunkin's or a coffee shop?
Yep, uh, it'll be a mobile branding.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it'll be Irving or whatever, but mobile will be the branding gas station. There will be a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through. I believe it's the same family that owns the one on Roundstone. So they'll, you know, and I believe there will be, will be Sals Pizza there.
Okay, so it's still going with?
Yep.
Remember when you had it, you were talking about pizza, coffee, and gas station?
And then, of course, it's a, it's a 4,500 square foot building, so it's pretty big. So they'll, they'll be, they'll have a lot of room for, I think it'll even be bigger than the one at Roundstone, cause Roundstone, I don't think it's quite that big. So it'll be, it's a good-sized building and they're gonna have a lot of, of, of things that they can offer to the town. Dairy caves and snacks and all kinds of stuff. It'll be a really nice facility. Really nice facility. If you look into Rankle Oil, they run, they're like Class A.
Yeah, I did my research after he came before the board.
Well, we did too. We just, we, my family and I care deeply about this town and we were not gonna sell it just to anybody. So when they approached us, you know, we did some digging and found it'd be the best, best chance for success for this town. And they're, and they, and they maintain their properties very, very well, so it's gonna, it's gonna be a Class A project. We're very happy about it.
So are you still putting the storage units down back?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna wait on that a little bit. Because of the amount of excavation needed to make this project work, we'll probably do that maybe next year.
So your pain hopefully does not happen for no reason, so you've had a lot of voices supporting you on the 1971 curb cut problem that you went on.
You know?
And the Economic Development Committee wants to look at the appeals process.
Right.
So that was one of the recommendations from one of our key members, so that will come to the board to see.
Well, the curb cut was not, was not, the, the town had its rules and rig, and we fought through those and we worked with it every step of the way. The state seemed to be a lot more, more of a struggle, cause that was just three years, just with the state alone. Cause the town gave me the approval in 2023, I believe, in the spring of 2023. So for the last two and a half, almost two, three years, I've been working, trying to get through the state process. That was really a lot more of a struggle than I would have anticipated. So the state has its COVID, lack of, you know, understaffed, overworked, and all the excuses I've heard, but we kept plowing through it, so we finally got the approval from the state, the ultimate approval, end of August, beginning of September. And as soon as we got the approval, we started working on getting the project going right away.
Are you noticing that getting better? Cause we were letting people start projects if they didn't hold the town liable, right? Is that stopping?
So.
Are they fully staffed up back at the state? I know they retired.
Technically, technically, we could have started the project when the town gave me the approval, because the, the property is town approval. The curb cut and 3A work, that's state approval. And we would have, we could have technically started the project, but then it would have sat there.
Waiting for the curb.
Waiting for the curb cut approval.
Right.
So that, to invest all that money just to watch it, wait for it, it really had to be at the same time. So that, we finally got the state approval, like I said, beginning of, maybe September sometime.
Terrible.
And then we, this was some final negotiation, so forth.
There's a, I mean, there's a lot of activity going on there, even the sidewalks going in now.
They're, they're being very aggressive. May, May will be a very aggressive opening. It's very doable, it's less than six months.
Yeah.
But they got a lot of work to do. They got, you know, retention ponds and this and that, and the tanks are already in the, we bought the.
I saw the Facebook pictures of them being delivered to the state. What is this gonna be? It's a gas station.
Well, we bought the gas tanks six months ago.
Yeah.
So we thought we were gonna get it, we were, I was told we would have gotten the permitting and approvals by early spring. May, April, March, April, you're gonna get the approval. We didn't get it until September.
Well, that's spring in the southern hemisphere.
I'm sorry?
That's spring in the southern hemisphere.
But we bought the tanks six months ago, so as soon as we got the approval, those, we put those in the ground, as you noticed, I think, last week. They were in the ground.
Yeah, they're not there, they're in the other, buried.
Yeah. So very excited. I hope the town's excited, I hope a lot of people are excited. Again, I think it's, I think it's a good, we, my family and I would have made more money. We would have needed less permitting if we wanna do apartments and houses. That's what Litchfield needs, more apartment or houses.
It's kinda crazy too, yeah.
When you think about it, you know?
Yeah.
We stuck, we held to it and it was a long process, but we're there.
Well, thank you very much for your effort.
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Thank you for your time. Appreciate very much. Have a nice evening.
Thanks for your time coming out and giving us an update.
Yeah, giving an update, that's definitely helpful.
Go to bed, Renee.
Go home, go to bed.
Oh, I'm gonna go to bed. Good night, board, thank you.
Good night. Not seeing any other public. I'm gonna close public input at 6:47. There will be a second in public input if anybody's in the gallery later on this evening. So first up in the business would be approval of minutes from November 10th, 2025, if I had an opportunity to review. So if there's no changes, I'll take a motion.
Good, I thought they were fine.
Motion approved.
Motion made to approve by Mr. Leary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Queenen. Any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 4-0-0.
Nope.
Oh, sorry, you're standing? Okay, so three.
I read and I watched, but I.
Yeah, 3-0-1, sorry. All right, so next up will be the abatement for map two, and if everybody's okay, we'll take all the abatements and go through it. So Ms. Kleiner, would you like to start with map two lot 98?
Map two lot 98, to Fernwood Drive. So the common theme that you'll see tonight is that there's many of these abatements that are actually for clubhouses, you know, whether it's an Uber 55 unit, or the clubhouses were incorrectly billed to the condo association. That's not how they're billed. They're, the value of the clubhouse is split between all of the residents on their features, so no one actually believe, gets a single bill for taxes on a clubhouse. That's just not how it's done. So normally, there'd be a negative amount that is placed, there's a, there's a card, because it's a parcel, but then there's a negative amount that's put on the card and that amount is put on, like, features, cause it, it belongs, the clubhouse belongs to all of the residents. Not to say they're taxed for it, they're just, it belongs to each of them. So on many of these, I think there's five altogether, that is the issue. It's common land, common to all of the residents, and a negative amount should have been placed on these property record cards, so that it did not generate a tax bill.
So, so are you saying that the money gets paid, it just comes out of everyone's individual taxes?
It's considered like a feature on the regular property, all the property owners that live in the association.
It's divvied up between them all?
It's got a value, yes.
So the money gets paid, it's just divvied up amongst all of?
Correct.
Okay.
And so that's this one, and to make it really easy, that is the number two, three, four, and five that Selectman Queen had added to the agenda that say common land exempt. That parcel is exempt. It's added to all the property owners.
So two, three, four, and five separate from all of them?
This is generally something done by the assessors. And it was overlooked. So the only one that is any different is map six, lot 53. That is for the interest only on the July bill. So in February, the property was sold. Unfortunately, the deed was delivered to the town, no, no problems there, but it was overlooked and it was not entered onto the property. So we had the wrong property owner on record for, until today, when thankfully, the new property owner contacted us, so therefore, we don't feel it's right to charge someone for interest when they did not receive a bill.
That's fair.
On our part.
Question for you, how does it get overlooked? Cause I know it's an automated system that brings the stuff over.
It's an automated system that brings the deeds over to a clerk. The clerk has to enter them into the assessing record card.
So that part of it's manual, okay?
Yes.
So should we separate the four from this one, or are we okay to do them all together?
I think they're fine to approve all abatements as presented, if that's how the board sees fit.
I'll make a motion to approve abatement one, two, three, four, and five as presented.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Leary. Do I have a second?
And?
There's one more?
Yeah.
The six.
Yes, there's actually six.
There's another one?
Yeah.
There's the one in the minutes.
I would draw my motion.
Agenda one. Oh, you just have to change, oh, sorry.
Cause they're all the same, right?
Well, there's five up top.
Yep.
Five added in the six.
And then there's one in the.
Six altogether.
Yeah, map two lot 98 was.
Oh, yeah.
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
It's on the regular agenda.
Yep. It's the same, same issue. It's a common space, so they're all the same.
So do you just want them, does somebody who landed to say six?
I'll re-motion to approve the five listed separately and the number two in the regular business, abatements as presented.
Okay, so motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Queenen. Any further discussion? And then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 4-0-0. Steve couldn't argue, Pat.
Of course.
I'll scribble on these things. All right, next, next up is communications from the town of Raymond and meeting with the state representatives. Ms. Kleiner?
So about a month ago, I came to and reported that there had been a town hall held in Raymond on a series of different issues, one being concerned over water and the availability of water. That meeting was held in Raymond also. I attended virtually. They are having a second meeting, and this meeting actually has a variety of different issues, but they are looking to have selectmen and state representatives from different municipalities attend, so collectively, you can all weigh in on these issues and then hopefully raise that at the state level. Some of them involve protecting natural water resources, some of them are on zoning, more specifically, the zoning amendments that were made at the state legislature last session, and the feeling that there, these have in the past been local issues, with local flavor. So the next meeting is December 2nd. I will also congratulate the town of Raymond for they were, presented the Russ Marquay Award at the NHMA Annual Conference last week, specifically for this advocacy work that they are doing, to try to bring towns, different towns and different municipalities together to weigh in on issues brought at the state house. So I did forward the letter as requested to not only the board, but also to Representative LaSalle's, the, Mr. Bohm.
And Mr. Peoples.
I think it was, I have to apologize, but looking back, I think the board had requested that we ask the representatives to come in, so that we can, you can discuss some of these issues. I put December 8th out there, but unfortunately, it seems like only Representative LaSalle's could make that date, so I'm not sure if the board would like to try another date with a longer lead time.
For them coming here?
For them coming here.
We do the 22nd?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd like to see at least two anyway, if not three.
Looks like 22nd, we're gonna move, gonna try to move.
We're trying to move that.
Try to move it to the 29th potentially.
Okay.
Just because of the, the end of the year encumbrances and everything like that, versus having.
Two meetings.
Two meetings, but whatever the board's preference is.
Can we do the encumbrances on 22nd?
Won't be enough time, I don't think, at that point.
It will be difficult.
Yeah.
We'd really like to get as close to the end of the year as we can, so that we've got all the expenses in and we are a little bit more sure on the end of the year balance.
Okay.
If possible.
So when would it be? In January?
No, it'd be the 29th.
Twenty ninth? Oh, we're gonna move it to the 29th, right?
Yeah. That's, that's the, on the bottom of the agenda, that's what the topic is about.
Okay.
I, I do think that this December 2nd meeting will be something that.
Formative.
Somebody should attend on behalf of the town. I know there's a number of town administrators, town managers that are going. Like I said, the last meeting was quite worthwhile.
What day is it, December 2nd?
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
Do you know what time the meeting is?
Daytime, right.
This is 6:30. There has been no online option suggested for this meeting, so I believe this is only in person.
And it's in Raymond?
It's in Raymond, yes.
They have a good pizza place there.
I have a planning board meeting that night, so I will not be able to attend.
It's at the Raymond Middle School.
Anybody else interested in going?
I'll buy you pizza.
Let me just check.
I'm happy to attend.
Yeah, I was, I say I can go. I think I can go that day too, so, but if there's somebody else that wants to go, it's, it's fine too.
Oh, do we have a, do we have a hearing December 2nd? It says SIP? We have a hearing here. What, what do we have, December 2nd? Am I here for a SIP public hearing? Potential, it says potential public hearing.
Uh, the SIP is coming on December 8th.
Yes.
Here.
Yep, I agree.
They already had their public hearing at the planning board.
Okay, so this must have been what we were doing tentative way back in the beginning.
It was, I think it was a placeholder if they had, if they didn't have it last week.
Is this about the centralizing of the ordinances versus local? Was that one of the things you're talking about?
I think it's, it's one of the concerns. One of the concerns is that some of the laws that were passed last session don't really allow for local control to weigh in, especially those requiring new housing and things of that sort.
The way I, the way I read it was that local control, local control losing control, and then the downshifting of costs to local entity.
Right.
And without any input from, from locals.
That seems to be the big fight. You want economic development, so you want them in, but you need the housing to have, you know, that's the fight.
Right.
And then, do you really want Concord telling Coas County what to do? You know what I mean? Centralized versus local, right? So, a lot of fights there going on, but.
I'll add.
The legislature.
This is not just New Hampshire.
Right.
This was a concern brought up at national conference as well.
Okay.
Oh, it's gotta be a problem all throughout the United States.
Federal not looking at state, state not looking at local, yeah.
The downshifting of costs in general is a challenge, so. Anyway, I can make myself, I can make myself available to go if no one else wants to go.
Did you, should you say you want me to go for it?
I, I may go, and I'll just say one more thing quickly. What I'm hearing is with all the ADU stuff, is if you don't have to live in your ADU, you really have two rental properties that you own, and slowly, they're thinking neighborhoods are turning into rental units, and that merely means long, it won't happen overnight, but long-term, single-family homes will go up even more, because you really want the single-family. So that's, that's the topics that I'm hearing, which I think are overlapping here.
Because right now, it's a requirement that you live in one of the house or the ADU, so you think it's gonna spin the other way where you can rent a home?
But that's what they're trying to have discussions about. If all of a sudden it turns into everything's a rental, you're really making the single-family homes go up more, you know, that's, but you want economic development, so that's, that's why they have to start talking, like John's saying. It's both there.
Well.
Yeah, I hope it's not as finite as that one issue, right? It's everything that goes on, but.
Yeah.
But hence the discussion between the select board and the representatives that represent Litchfield. There should be some discussion as to how locally you feel about these issues. You know, I know we share, department heads, we share different bills amongst each other to weigh in, but I think that's kind of where it's dropped, and I don't think that there's a lot of discussion between the local and our state representative.
That's true.
Since, would the board like me to attempt another date with your state-elected officials?
Yeah, yeah, I think we should. If they can't make the 20, if we move it to the 28th, I say let's do it the first of the year. They're, they're going in session at that point, aren't they?
They are, but at least they wouldn't have had really any votes, probably.
I know we need to get, I think what, reason why we're delayed is the last time we missed the, when they were already in session, already out, and by the time we get, thought there was a good idea to bring the board.
It's very busy for them.
Yeah, so, yeah.
29th if they're available?
Yeah, 29th, yeah, 20th, 29th if they're available, wherever that Monday is, and then, assuming we actually move the 22nd meeting, and then, if not, sometime in the first of the year, one of the first two meetings. Cause I would hope January would get a little slower for us, cause we're waiting for a bunch of hearing and deliberatives, so we're, pretty much all of our decisions should be done, I hope. And Kim, do you wanna, do you wanna attend this meeting?
I'm leaning yes.
Okay.
We'll read up on the directions on that.
Why don't we just, can we just respond and let them know that we will have a representative there? At this point, it's Ms. Queenen, if not, there'll be another selectman that will go. If for nothing else, to hear what everybody else is saying. We live out in a little fight, then we don't know what other problem, and I think every town's probably struggling the same way we are. Okay. All right, anything else on this topic? And then, let's go to the 2026 Propose Warren Articles.
Oh, boy.
The nice update. Is this truly gonna be seven zoning amendments?
Yes. Would you like a short list?
Yes. Read his digest version, please.
ADU changes.
Increase in the space.
Home occupation changes.
Okay.
State, I believe that's because of state.
Yeah.
Childcare and stuff, yeah. Changing the definition of a duplex.
Yes.
Solar energy systems. Adding solar energy to the zoning ordinances because it's, it's mute.
Yeah. Yeah.
Signs on Albuquerque, which we've discussed many times.
Yeah, and then, just to be clear, the signs on Albuquerque, we're talking about the small, you know, the kids are. Yeah, and then, just to be clear, the signs on Albuquerque, we're talking about the small, you know, the kids are graduating, fishing derby. We're not talking about erecting signs, temporary signs that can be placed now because they're legally not supposed to. Who makes the decision on what signs go? Come before us.
With the select board.
It'll, they'll, they'll just submit a request to place like the.
No, but if we say yes to some and no to others, that's a slippery slope.
The way it's written is, um, it's really directed towards what's best for the town. So it's not gonna be, I'm cutting firewood, yeah, it's, it's definitely a slippery slope. But, without it, we can't have the kids graduating, we can't have the fishing derby, we can't have the Christmas parade, we can't have.
I believe it should be. So in other towns, it's been done as it's town land, town signs, town entities, town, you know.
That would make sense.
That doesn't mean it, you know, it's, it's the firewood sign. But what we are running into a problem with is it's a, you know, a conservation event or the school board signs. And so it's allowing town signs on town property. The next one, certifying foundations, and this has been a problem because there's been two recently. And this hardly ever happens, my, from my understanding. But there's been two, um, cases that have gone to the zoning board in the past six months.
When was this, last week?
Yep, on foundations being incorrectly laid on, on the property, on the land. And they've had to come and ask for an equitable waiver.
So right now, you're not required to have a land surveyor go out and basically verify. So this will require the land surveyors to go out beforehand.
I thought they did that already, they pinned the property the way it's supposed to be, the, the foundation was to go.
Some do, some don't, I don't think it's required.
It's not required?
So they go off the old tax map and they found out, um, two feet over on your property.
I had two.
Tear it down.
Within the last six months.
Tear it down.
Um, and then, uh, House Bill.
That'd be my point, tear it down.
The last one is House Bill, um, one sixty eight, which was actually, um, requested by us to the planning board. Because that is, um, with the new state law that allows impact fees to be used on DPW facilities. It has to be added to the zoning ordinance under impact fees, um, so the voters go to approve that.
Wasn't one of those, the, on ADUs, it's also how you measure an ADU. Because right now, the confusion is. They didn't want closets and stairways. Right, right, in your home, home you do, ADUs you don't. And pushing to have the verbiage changed, or verbiage added, so that it would be measured the same way you measure a home.
But isn't it increasing the, is it increasing the square footage for a maximum?
The, and there's another one, increasing the square footage to a maximum, yes, so there should be two in there for ADUs. I don't think you could have the same thing, you know, you can't increase the square footage and then say, how you measure, I thought we had to break them out.
Maybe they combined it?
Yeah, maybe it was to find it.
Combined it.
Did they combine, okay, they probably.
Asked me to put in seven spots, so.
Okay.
And then I asked what the seven were, and Joan gave me the shortlist. So, it looks, uh, long already. So that's, um, course one, selection of officers, um, which I will get from the town clerk. Then the zoning, so we're already at Article nine. And which is the operating budget. So the operating budget now, it's, it's reflected in yellow because it has not been officially. Um, accepted by the budget committee, um, but where they've left it for now, it's, it's. Eight million four hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety five. With the default at eight million one sixty one fifty eight.
Where's that set for the cap?
It was still underrated by.
Yes, we are still under the cap.
When, Article one, election of officers, when, when do people who are gonna, I assume that's for voting. When do people who want to run for off.
Officers have to have.
Thirty first?
That's a lot, yeah, it's a last Friday of January. And the town clerk, I think, is here three to five, or something for that purpose. Okay, um, so we get to the operating budget. So then we start with some of the ones that, um, are kind of proposed. At your, um, establishing the capital reserve. And I placed a spreadsheet into your portal, which all the department heads worked on. Which outlays the vehicles that would be considered. So in order to have the capital reserve, you have to have. A document that shows what is being replaced by the reserve. Um, and as you can see, the need is a lot larger than what we have. Proposed to be added to the reserve. Luckily, I don't think that we can realistically look at a number that would satisfy all the needs. Because for twenty twenty five, um, which included some vehicles that were actually wanted in past years. And not replaced, you're looking at a million four. So. I think that speaks more to the need of the reserve. Because we are constantly not putting money aside for these vehicle purchases. And, you know, some, like the fire, um, rescue truck, we've been lucky to get a, uh, grant for. We also intend to go for another clean fleets grant for an additional, uh, DPW truck. But, at the end of the day, we have to start putting some money aside for these purchases.
And land purchases too, as we.
And land purchases too. You know, overall, you're, you're looking at replacements, you know, from now until, you know, twenty. I think we went out, it was twenty forty three, um, at like ten million dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a large amount of money.
I may be naive here, what land purchases would the town be trying to buy?
Ah, so, um, earlier today, um, this is public information. I, at the board's request, um, attorney, Inspector Morgan and I. Were asked to work with the New Hampshire DOT. Thanks to Selectman Queenan, um, who had some information delivered to NRPC. She heard that there was some movement on this issue with the circumventural highway. Uh, last Friday, I reached out to New Hampshire DOT. To two contacts that, um, Attorney Inspector Morgan had given me. And today, I received a phone call, um, from a gentleman at DOT, a project supervisor. Who has asked to come before the board on December eighth. To talk about the process, which entails dissolving the highway plan. Which I understand goes to, um, the governor and the executive council. Who actually dissolves that off of the future plan. And then, what happens to the pro- to the property? And so there are fifty nine parcels over Hudson, Litchfield, Nashua, and Merrimack. And some of those parcels have nineteen, have structures on them. They are working currently with the town of Hudson, so they've already been built before the Hudson Select Board. So he sent, um, an item to put on your December eighth agenda to come in public and speak further about the process. But in essence, is the town interested in these parcels? A lot of them being in your commercial, southern commercial district. And then there's a process, if the town isn't interested, it goes to the housing authority, they get, um, to weigh in. If the housing authority, then it will go out to realtors, but it is sold at fair market value. So the state does do appraisals on them, so.
That'll be a lot of money then.
Yeah, compared to what they bought it for back thirty years ago.
Yeah, yeah, um, the, the land that we're concerned about is commercially zoned today. And we've been trying to look at ways to encourage commercially, commercial entities to go there. Is that a bad thing that they sell it?
No, to us.
Well, not to us, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how a town, I don't know how we buy it, to be honest with you, but.
What we do.
Well, depending on who buys it. Well, yeah, I don't know how a town, I don't, I can't imagine us going to the voters and asking them to raise a million dollars to acquire land.
So, the town would not want to keep the property.
Correct, we want to sell it again, right.
Could we profit off it?
But the town can place RFQs and, and solicit.
Correct.
Proposals for what would be developed, and you may sell the property. The only difference is the, I think the challenge. Is that the board does not have the authority. Which has to be approved by, um, the legislative body. You do not have the authority to purchase or to sell. So if you found a buyer, that too would have to go to town meeting, I think that's your challenge.
It's not about multiple years, and at this point, to, to go through that process.
Correct, and, you know, there are some boards that do have the authority. There is a law that d- allows the selectmen to have the authority to purchase and sell land. My understanding is that has failed.
It's, it kinda reminds me of, there was a project on the north end to do the engineering specs for a sewer system. For the reason to try to acquire into, um, court, court commercial businesses in town, and it failed. And it was small dollars, I only can imagine what this would cost if you're doing it at fair market, so.
There are some properties that have easements. And those easements will follow.
Yeah, I thought easements were part of the deed anyway, right, that's how it works.
And the reason it's fair market value is because federal money was used to buy some of that property, so they have to ask for that.
So when he comes here, he'll have an idea of how much land and approximate cost, I assume?
So, um, no, I, the appraisals haven't been done yet. So as the executive council and the governor weighs in on dissolving the highway plan. There's a legislative body called the Long Range Capital, something. That all these parcels and the appraisals and all that have to go to this long range. Like, it's a group of senators and legislators, and they review it, and they approve the sale of the properties. So it sounds like a pretty lengthy process. But, and to Selectman Brunel's point, um, it can just go to the general market.
Right.
Um, and anyone can buy it. The problem you lose there is control.
Right.
On whether you want traditional, commercial. I think the Economic Development Survey showed that there were some things that your residents wanted. Some things your residents didn't.
Yeah, there was also a suggestion in there, which you'll be seeing about ranking, like, the order of the properties, if you. Wanted to, you know, prioritize what would go there.
Yeah.
Buy certain properties, not others. So, I, I, pardon, I did take kind of the, um. Step to book him since he was available today, so.
That makes sense.
And it's all transparent, right? Being transparent about it all.
Yes, and, and. You know, well, this has been, what, two years since the board asked us to investigate this? So I'm glad that we finally got some information, some movement forward.
Yeah. All right, so that's Article ten.
So that is Article ten. And we were asking for that two hundred thousand to come from unassigned fund balance. Then after I did do a spreadsheet to show you if all of these passed. How much would come out of unassigned, so we can go over that after. Uh, human services and health agencies, um, so Mister Kelly, um, from the fire department. Who is right now your, um, health officer. And April Weber, who is the, um, citizens rep. We have reviewed them all, we are meeting, um, next we- next week. To finalize our recommendations. So the spreadsheet in your portal kinda gives you worst case scenario, it's like twenty six. Is what the, um, requests come to. Traditionally, we do not fill them all at their, pull them out.
Did some of these go down?
And that comes from unaside.
I noticed the total went down, right? Did any of these go down? I thought I saw one go down. Maybe I was zooming too fast, did any of these numbers go down? No, maybe not, maybe I was just looking at different.
Overall warrant, you mean?
No. I'm just looking at the, the, um, the spreadsheet in here, which was, you know, a picture of the spreadsheet.
Uh, no, it was twenty six eight.
Twenty two, and then the approv- oh, so the approved went down, but not the request, okay. Gotcha, so, so you see what I'm saying on that total recommended line? So we, we, the request went up, but the approval went down.
Yeah, so like last year, the request was much higher, but we didn't approve them all at that level.
So nineteen hundred negative, all right.
So the reevaluation and the ambulance are the two that we're kinda tied to. That we have to, there's no.
Right.
No getting around those.
And even though we have currently an RFP out for assessing services.
We still need to fund it.
We should still put the money aside.
Figure where we have, because I think last time we saw this, I thought we should cut the capital reserve in half. Because I didn't like the four twenty eight number, I thought that was a little high. It's bringing our balance or our reserve down to ten point zero nine from eleven point two three. Whereas in twenty twenty three, we're at eight point seven four, and we were dangerously low. At two, two and a half million. This would put us at three point one million, which is not a whole lot above that two and a half million danger line to me. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I don't mind funding some of these, but we should, we can't put ourselves in a.
So, yeah, this, if the, if all of these did come from unassigned. Then four hundred and twenty eight thousand would come out of unassigned, which would actually take us back to the, almost the same number we had last year. Um, unfortunately, it's a lower percentage because our general fund operating, that's, that's what you're. Compared against. That has risen, so it leaves you at a smaller percentage. And yours is, your local policy is eight to twelve percent. DRA policy being five to seventeen, so figure that. So both of those, property revaluation, um, are tradit- and the ambulance are traditionally that amount. Traditionally, from unassigned fund balance, um, just, we have spent twenty thousand four hundred and eighty three dollars. So far in twenty five on ambulance, so that kinda gives you an idea of the need.
So let me, let me ask a question, if the voters voted down revolving fund for the ambulance, now we have no funding. So let me, let me ask a question, if the voters voted down revolving fund for the ambulance, now we have no funding to pay for the ambulance. But no means no. So where does the money come from? I know it's, I know no means no in the fund, and so it doesn't really directly stop us from paying the ambulance bill.
Yeah, um, so, uh, I asked for a legal opinion on no means no. No mean to no doesn't apply, if a warrant article fails. It does not stop your obligation from the general operating budget. So.
Well, what defines obligation though?
You have a contract with the town of Hudson.
But the revolving funds to cover the non-payments.
Right, you'd have to pay it from the general operating budget. All this means is that twenty thousand wouldn't go in there. But you'd still be responsible. Scary.
And I asked a question only because if we say go to taxation instead. Right, voters say no to it, cause it's a tax increase, even though it's our obligation to pay it. I, I just, looking at how you. Right, but how, I'm looking, I was, I asked a question, cause I wanna know if there's a way to reduce the unassigned fund balance draw. I think we're using, I think we use unassigned fund balance correctly here. But I understand where Rob, where Bob is coming from when it comes to getting close to that percentage that he's comfortable with. So, okay.
And the concern I have is people gonna see unassigned fund balance again and think, and they're gonna say no. Still have this obligation to gonna pay out.
So I, I, I thought, we have an obligation for our police cruisers to respond to, and if they're not running, how do I do that?
They call the ambulance.
I'm just wondering if you can all use the obligation the same way.
What, but the next article's the same, general assistance, right, so. We've currently spent, you know, over twenty thousand dollars, you're required by law. Um, to provide general assistance if the applicant, um, is. Yeah, it, you know, is worthy, um, and meets a criteria. And so we need to fund this, and I think this is going to, this is another part of the. Conversation on why we'd like to move the meeting from the twenty second to the twenty ninth. Because it may be because of default. That we have to ask the selectmen to ask for this money from the che- from the, um, trust funds. Because we are getting low in cash, right now, both the ambulance expense and. The general assistance is coming out of the operating budget. But if we need to get that money from the trust funds, we'll ask you on the twenty ninth.
You brought up a good point on the voter guide though, where we can explain that this is required by law. And we pay this, right, if we could say that. Cause I don't seem to be understanding the unassigned balance, you know, but it might help. Required by law.
The next one is a public works expendable trust fund, which we commonly place. Um, money into this, um, some of our concern is. The recycling equipment, um, and we sometimes use this for recycling. If we get into an instance where we have more costs than we have. So the current balance in that fund right now is only twenty, um, thousand fourteen ninety five. So we're asking to, um, put thirty.
To make it fifty?
From unassigned. Then the police, police cruisers, um, so three. Purchasing three police cruisers over a five year lease. Um, the total to be raised would be two hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty two. Over the five years, the first payment being forty seven thousand three hundred and sixty six. And we're asking for that to come from unassigned fund balance, first payment only. The remaining four would be put into the police budget, remaining years.
Do we have to, do we have to use the word lease?
I know.
Can we not say a five year purch- uh, purchasing pro- agreement? Or five year finance purchasing agreement versus word lease? I think the word lease keeps on confusing people.
No, we, we used to do it with the highway department, when we bought the trucks. We bought the white trucks, I think we bought three of them, and that was a lease, and I, I don't think it hurt us. Was, was, was it a tr- traditional lease, or was it the same, it's the same.
I know Budget Committee keeps on bringing up the word lease and, and I gotta say, we, we own the vehicle at the end, or not turning it back in.
I, I don't understand why they have the word lease in there as well, because you're purchasing it, it's just the.
Yeah, it's a lease purchase. I know, I.
Well, maybe it's gotta amplify the word purchase.
Well, the difference is in the lease, you can get out of it. You can walk away, you don't have a vehicle and you put money out, but you can walk away. So in this sense, it is a, a lease for three years and then we own it.
It's a five year. Yeah, it's a five year. It's a five year car note as well.
I like what Stephen just said, right, it's, he's just said, it's a lease for three years, but then we own it.
Yeah, lease for five.
Or five or whatever, right, so, I like that. Voter guide's gonna be very handy.
I can try and inquire at the DRA if there's. Um, something that they will allow us to put within the article to emphasize that point.
Check the guide.
But the, um.
Put an asterisk.
Yeah, uh, you can in the guide, what warrant articles language is.
The way people are gonna read it is why are we leasing police cars when we're gonna give them back at the end? No, we're gonna keep them if they're worth it.
They have, you've done two highway trucks. And it's the same company.
It's the same we did the towers with too, right?
The reason you're seeing, um, a tax impact is remember the new law is. We have to show the tax impact over five years if it. So that's why you see that.
That actually helps, because people also think that, you know, zero impact, where does the money come from? This way we could say, well, it's.
Hopefully it makes clear, it makes it clearer.
Two cents.
Yeah, two cents on, and that's hard, right, because. We're estimating two cents, but we're estimating what the total budget will be that year, I. It's, it's a crazy process in my mind. Then, uh, Article seventeen was requested by the road agent. Um, two hundred thousand dollars for additional paving. Um, I do wanna mention that the road agent has told us about the systems that are failing. Um, and some of the road, um, piping and road structures that's gonna have to be replaced. Um, so this money is important, even over and above us being behind our normal paving schedule.
So that all, that all has to go in the voters' guide, to explain, here's our targets, here's why.
Yes, cause we have the two roads that have failing structure.
I know Kevin's aware that based on the current tax cap, this would be one of the ones the Budget Committee can't support. I don't think.
This puts us over?
Yeah, definitely. This, this would not allow them to, yeah, and I think.
What are we, fifty in there, fifty seven?
We're a hundred and.
So, yeah, it, they won't be able to support it and that's a concern.
But, but I think Kevin said it very nice, I mean, clearly too, let the voters decide, they've in the past have supported this, understand what the need is. And I think if we put the right detail on the voters' guide and do the right education, people will see the value of it. Um, but there's a risk there.
Because what, the what could happen is this fails. Though, the urgency of that, um, structure becomes increasingly. And then we have to take money from the traditional paving and, and, and I know there are roads that are starting to. Um, we do have NRPC doing an additional anal- a new analysis of five years. Next year, so.
You've got two periods in that sentence there, the first sentence, number seventeen, Article seventeen. Article seventeen.
I got period happy. Article eighteen was brought to me from the town clerk. Um, there was a new law that was passed so that you can change the term of the supervisors of the checklist. From six to three, which seems a little bit more reasonable. Um, it does not change it for the current supervisors of the checklist. Only change it going forward for the ones that would be elected. The Article nineteen was requested by the Recreation Commission to add fifty thousand. Um, to the Recreation Expendable Trust Fund, um, and they have asked for that to come from unassigned. Current balance in that account is currently twenty five thousand five hundred and ninety five dollars. Um, but my understanding is some of that was, um, tied around the floor at Talent Hall. Which is on hold at the moment. Article twenty, um, was discussed, um, by you folks to establish a legal expendable trust fund. Um, we lowered the amount in the budget. Um, and the thought was to have this available in case there was that unexpected. Item, um, so we put that from unassigned, um, as well. Article twenty one was requested by the fire department, um, and that is to place two per diem firefighters. Um, for overnight shifts, six PM to six AM. Um, and so that is, would be a taxable item. And that would be another that the Budget Committee would not be able to support, um, but is needed. Article twenty two was requested by the library trustees, that's to add money to the library trustee. Earned time expendable trust fund, um, they would like eight thousand dollars, that would be. A taxable item, which doesn't even equillate to a cent. Um, but the fund balance right now is, is just a tad over a thousand dollars and. You know, it should be equal to the, the payout of earned time for their employee.
That seems to me like eight thousand dollars, do you really have to put it out on a ballot, but?
You do, anything to an expendable trust has to be a warrant.
So you can put it in there.
Um, Article twenty three is one we're still going back and forth, we've asked for DRA. Um, to weigh in on this, and I have not, um, had the opportunity to speak with the DRA. Uh, our rep yet, um, but there, speaking with our legal counsel. Um, there was some question over whether you really wanted to move. The lease revenue out of the general operating budget. Um, because if you do that, it has to be an article every year. You can't have one article moving future revenue for years into the future.
How is, doesn't rec do that though, is there fees related to?
Yes, there is a special, uh, law that allows fees from parks and, and. Recreation programming to go into a, a special revenue. This is not a special revenue that they are asking for, they are asking for a trust. Um, first of all, they were asking for the conservation land fund, which our legal counsel has said is not. The RSA for that fund says that land use change tax can go into the fund. That RSA does not say that this, um, money from leases can go into that. Um, so legal counsel said you could look at the farmland fund, which already exists. Again, you'd have to have the article every year, or you could leave the revenue coming into the general operating budget.
And put in the budget itself.
And put a line item in the conservation budget. For whatever it is that they're looking to spend to offset that, kind of like you do zoning and planning, right? You have the revenue come in and you have the line item in the budget for the expense.
That's been my preferred direction, is cause this way it's there and it's up to their, it's up to them to spend it appropriately and up to the board to.
I like that better too. Yeah, go in front of the, the townspeople each year for a couple thousand dollars.
Right, and either way, you can't say that doesn't have a tax impact. Cause if you're reducing revenue to the, it, yeah. You have to raise more taxes if you've reduced the revenue, so there is a tax impact, although the lease amount is relatively small, so. It would be relatively small impact. Um, so, well, we're waiting, um, DRA guidance on that. Um, Article twenty four was the additional town clerk hours. Which is just raising the part-time employee, um, to full time. I have a question out to DRA on this one, because I'm struggling with this five year tax impact. Question, um, because if we've done it in twenty twenty six. Then there's really no raise to the budget in twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, it.
They're colder, but that would not be part of the calculation.
So, I've asked for better guidance on, on how they want this tax impact. I mean, I, we could do the tax impact of that line item in future budgets. But it's not an additional, it would be the tax impact of that annual budget that year, so. Uh, again, I, I, it's a, something we're struggling with, and we're not the only one. Um, Article twenty five is to modify the elderly exemption, um, that was discussed at your last meeting. Um, and I think, you know, we have definitely seen the need. Um, the past few weeks, um, and so that language is prescriptive. It's taken right from the DRA, um, and there's a majority vote required, but there's no tax impact on that article. The same with Article twenty six, which is to modify the, um, optional service connected total disability credit. Um, that language is prescriptive, and I was asked to ask again. Is the board considering the three thousand or the four thousand? There's, you know, relatively a cent difference on the tax.
Who, who asked you to ask again?
The veterans.
And they're for the four? I, I'm, I mean, I'm for the four too, so. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, I know there was some discussion around that may be too much for the voters to accept. But to be honest.
What's the tax impact on it?
Less than a cent.
Less than a cent?
To go from three to four.
What's the total for four? What's the total for three?
I think it was two cents and then. And.
I, I think it was like ninety one thousand dollars difference, but I don't have my sheets from last time.
Um, I thought I left it on the portal just for this question.
I'm in favor of it raising it to four, but I mean, I just wanna ask questions, because I'm sure people at home are asking it.
I did, I did leave it on the portal.
Yeah, it's on the bottom there.
Is it there? I'm gonna go do it.
So. The.
This is for veterans that are disabled due to service.
Yep.
Due to service.
In my opinion, made the ultimate sacrifice and we as people should be supporting them. I, I, that's my, that's my belief, but.
And it's a very small amount, right? We have thirty-six.
Yeah.
Um, and traditionally, I mean, it's pretty hard to get classified, you're classified by the V A.
Yes.
Um, and that's pretty difficult to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
It's a process.
Yeah. So. The tax um, rate on three was it ended up, uh, did I not put that individual? So it went from two seventy-nine to two eighty. It's, it's, but it's less than a cent, two s- two seventy-nine, one to two eighty oh two, so it's like a cent.
Like a penny.
Difference. Um. From three thousand to four thousand.
Well, a penny's worth of, more than a penny, so it's.
Takes three cents to make him.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean.
Think I thought you heard something that was even more than that, but, you know.
So there's thirty, how many? Thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Another thousand dollar, thirty-six thousand dollar.
Yeah.
And, and a lot may spill, I don't know if it's true, into the other category of the one above it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So they lose, so you are losing those thirty-six from um, RSA seventy-two twenty-eight, the standard.
Yeah.
Um. Because they will not be eligible for that.
Yep. So it's not a, it's not really a four thousand dollar difference, it's minus whatever the, the original was.
Minus a seven fifty, yeah.
So it's really a thirty, three hundred dollar increase. A little pain though. I mean, I, like I said, it, it sounds like three of us are in favor of the four, it sounds like four, so. I would change it to four and we vote on it next time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hash it out anymore if we have any more feedback.
May I make one note before we move on? If you scroll up to elderly exemption just a little bit, see the single applicant, the married applicants, we're not gonna change it, we've already been through this.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm getting lots of emails like probably everybody else about if one or two people are social security making forty thousand, if you're married, cause you're each getting two thousand, it's not a lot of money to pay the taxes, the, the donut hole, the medication. So I'm just, next year, I mean, we did a lot with exemptions this year to lower the bill. But maybe next year, cause we are like ranked last, other than Milford, which was abominable. I think they had twenty thousand dollars, it was something right, but other towns are really high here on the income. So next year, cause we've already had all this approved, right?
Originally, that was my thought, was that we needed to raise the income. But I think what we saw as a result of the revaluation is their assessment grew so, by so much, just because of the market, that we really need to raise that exemption amount, just to hold them equal to what they were.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, and this might not even do that.
If you're single getting two thousand a month, that's forty, right? If you're lucky at the higher, when they retired, right? Cause it's, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, right? I'm just saying, to somebody with forty to sixty thousand dollars, it's just not a lot when your taxes are over ten thousand, so. And like I said, medicine, I'm seeing that in emails. I'm, I used to say you had instability, housing instability, food instability, that's short-term, but this is struggle from the emails I'm getting.
Yes.
Do I pay my medicine or do I put fuel in the house? This is what I'm hearing. So I'm just saying, we can't, we, we did get the exemptions better, so that's good.
Yeah.
But next year, we really maybe should look at that if things keep going in the direction they're going. That's my only comment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I, I, I really hope that it passes because it's desperately needed.
Yeah.
It's just.
Both of them, the elderly and the other one, the dispel, disabled.
It's heart, it's absolutely heartbreaking that in a country as wealth, wealthy as ours, that our older people are struggling.
Even in a town that's become as affluent as Litchfield.
Yes.
This is not a rural farm community anymore.
No, it's not.
Very white collar community now. We need to take care of our, our elderly.
Yes.
I, I've, I've been seeing articles about eliminating property tax for sixty-five years and older. Eliminating school taxes for.
School taxes too for them, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what the right answer is either way, but.
Get some commercial in town.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just, I don't know, like I look at the commercial business that we could bring into town, I don't see how it offsets too much.
Enough, yeah.
It's not enough for this, for the amount of residential we have versus what we have for commercial property. At least, I don't see it, but. The economic report will tell us, right? When's that coming?
We knew that week three. We did. Unless you can really score up at the southern part of town with some kind of campus in there or something, you know?
It would be interesting.
But, but it's. Commercial.
Right, right. But it's still won't offset.
You want low impact and high tax dollars.
Yes.
But I don't know how you do without, without septic system, without any, there's a lot of things you can't bring in. Cause when you bring, when you're looking for a high-value commercial, you're looking for something in high-tech that does either light manufacturing. But you don't have any facilities to do that.
Right.
Or service.
Challenge, and that was what the whole story was about, trying to deal with the north, north end and putting the septic system in.
Mm-hmm.
We had to get ahead of it and we weren't gonna build it, we're just gonna design it, so we made sure we knew it was gonna go in. Didn't happen, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it, yeah, hindsight's a hundred million, whatever, but.
And so we do, um, you know, in January, um, we have Liberty coming in and speaking to the T R C because we have a gas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, system that's gonna be worked on, um, uproot, um, Charles Bancroft Highway.
Yeah.
To the airport, the loop.
Yep.
And, um, you know, that's one thing that you generally want to see, um, businesses want as well.
Them on gas, yeah.
But I don't know how we work on the sewer problem because the municipalities around us don't have any capacity as well.
No, this.
So, you know.
I think we were trying to tie it to either, I think it was going into Manchester, I think that's what the plan was back then, but that was a long, long time ago. Um, but.
I believe they're both Manchester and Nashville are under um, D E S special circumstances.
Gotcha.
And look at Londonderry, they have a lot of tax base, their bills are still high.
Crazy.
They have, they have a lot of industry over there, right? Yeah.
But they're also, I mean, I guess the other side of it too is their assessments, their, their price value is really high too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, homes that were like two fifty are now in the five fifty, six hundred thousand dollar price range right now. Which, but that's happening here too.
Everywhere, yeah. Um, so I know the challenge here was, we discussed not having a lot of warrant articles and here we are. I don't.
But only two are really new, right? Most of them are repeats or zoning.
I don't remember this.
I, I think we, we, we throw a whole bunch of stuff on a spreadsheet, go, this is what we think we need, but we may have cut some back, but every one of them here has a value that we need to kind of push forward. Um, the, the problem's gonna be is, you got seven up front before the operating budget. Fatigues are you gonna set at? That boy twenty-six. And I know we have no choice but to have them in front of the operating budget, but.
Yeah.
And is there, is there a reason why the, like, the capital reserve and the human resources one is right after operating? Can we move the cruisers up to be?
We can put them in whatever order you would like.
I know, I, I know everybody else, I, I think, kinda get the operating system and the cruisers close by and let everything else kind of fall, makes sense to me.
Yeah, you tell me the order you'd like them, we'd move them around.
Move the cruisers and the ambulances right up at the top.
Yeah.
Public safety.
Good sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would agree.
Then let it be, something else fall the way it was falling, I guess. Well, do you wanna move the fire, the request from firefighters up too?
I mean, I think that should be with the town clerk as new.
Yeah, that's personnel.
Personnel, okay.
Personnel, yeah.
Okay.
We need the cruisers.
Yeah, that was. And, and I would just say, I, I do think the coverage is becoming an issue, so I mean, it's, we, we have survived as a community with what we have because of the department and what kind of resources they have there, but it's getting to the point where it's daunting. I mean, today alone, I think there was five medical calls.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And they were almost back-to-back during the day. And at nighttime, it's like, there's at least, you know, on a weekend, I think, like, one or two every night, it seems like, so.
And I think London there called for assistance for three.
Yes, because they, cause they had all, because they had, they had their co- locked up on exit four, plus they had a bunch of medicals and they had no coverage, so we had to go over for coverage. Which that happens, I mean, that's what mutually it's all about, but.
We provide some to Manchester as we can.
Yeah, we had to do coverage in one of the, one of the stations, I forget. Yeah.
Which the budget committee asked about, I mean, this is mutual aid, I mean, this, they do it for us, we do it for them.
Can't, you can't say, you can't say no, you can't say no. You never know, you're gonna need a whole bunch of people coming in and the one good thing about the surrounding communities, they all respond with many, many meeting bodies and equipment.
I mean, I don't know, was there some, you know, of course, the police cruisers were not asking for money for the first year to come from taxation. What about additional paving? Do you wanna move that up? That does hit taxation though.
I like, I like what, I like what Bob said about, just let's keep the two critical things up on top and let everything else kind of fall through. Not fall through, but let it go in order.
Mm-hmm.
Um. When that voted, we have the voter guide, I think we'll take each one of these little things and snippet it and post it separately with more follow-up and more background. Just to kind of get it out in social media, because as much as I think the voter guide is a help, when I solicit people, some people haven't, most people didn't even seen it or looked at it.
Yeah.
That's what, that's concerns me, cause we spent a lot of money and time doing it, so.
Yes, a lot of time.
If we can get them, if we can get them to grasp on the articles, one article at a time, through whatever means they do, whether it's social media or, or the voter's guide, that's.
Twenty-six is gonna be tough though.
Although, I have to say, this past year with the voter guide, with the new school um, administration, they all came over and they were helping us and it went like that, so. I'm so thankful.
So, um, can we get this link, can this link gets it over to John Davidson to say, David Sun to um, share with the rest of the budget committee?
Yes.
As a draft.
So I'm gonna, um, just state that I'll move those two that you mentioned, but you want them all. Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't.
At least for now.
I don't think we can eliminate any of them. I don't want any of them.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to vote them all anyway, at our next meeting at least, I believe, on December eighth, we're gonna have to vote them all. Because the budget committee will see it on the fourth.
The one that might go is the twenty-three, conservation land.
That could go.
That, that'll probably drop away because we don't know where it's gonna fall.
Right.
And the amount of effort it's going to take might not even be worth it. It'd probably be, like you were saying, I'd rather do it that way, put it into the fireland, whatever it's called.
So we'll have twenty-five articles.
Twenty-five. Four pages, six pages.
So I'll just gonna um, say that some of the language may change after I speak to the D R A, but the intent and the amount wouldn't change.
Yeah, this is a little easier to read than the spreadsheet we had so far, so I would just put it up to them, leave the draft mark on it and then as we voted down, voted, we'll uh, we'll get the updates.
There'll be a bunch of discussion there.
Yep, yeah, the next meeting is the fourth, so.
The last page, did, was that wording there before, given under our hands that said Litchfield, it was? I don't remember seeing that. I like it. I must have glanced by that before. Nice.
Any thought about cutting that capital reserve?
The que- I was, so I was thinking what you were saying.
What article are you talking about?
Yeah, the.
Balance requests.
So, if you cut it, I think cutting it to a hundred thousand dollars doesn't really give them a whole lot of flexibility. I was thinking a buck fifty, that'd save fifty, but I don't know if that gets anywhere in your, in your dent for your concern.
I just, I think starting out, I think a hundred thousand's a good start.
What article number are you looking at?
This is under the unassigned fund balance, uh, request, warrant articles.
Yeah.
It was the first spreadsheet in there. It's right after draft warrant articles.
That's what I'm, oh, okay, I'm still in the draft, right.
Yep. So right after that, you have the first thing is capital reserve at two hundred thousand out of unassigned fund. And again, I worry about that.
That dollar amount is gonna chase them away.
Down there, man.
I think the two hundred will chase them away.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, they're a little impact.
Yeah.
I think a hundred thousand to start is a good.
Yeah. I'm just, my only concern is looking at what's in the pipeline and the things that are coming up. Hundred thousand dollars will get eaten up very quickly.
Yeah, you do have ten million dollars in vehicles that you guys.
I, I understand.
But I get what you're saying, I mean. They don't though.
I just don't, I don't want the voters to vote it down either. Like, put something in there that they'll maybe be able to support.
Yeah, I, I, I kinda wish.
Cause it's the one that stands out, out of all the others, it stands out because of the amount.
Maybe it being two hundred, like paving isn't good.
It, it could be, yeah. Um. I mean, I'd be acceptable to a hundred to start it, but we have to commit to go back next year and put more, keep on putting more money into it.
Maybe another hundred next year?
Yeah, well, I try, hopefully if we have less warrant articles, a little bit more potentially, depending how the unassigned fund balance is.
The problem is that we get these grants and there's a town portion.
Yep.
And we don't have it. And so you let, you know, with the fire, we need like, you know, fifty thousand left in our budget at the end of this year, which is touch and go, um, because the de- default in order to take advantage of, you know, almost three hundred thousand from the state. I mean, this is crazy, you don't let three hundred thousand free money go.
No, and I get it, don't have the money.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think Bob's raising two concerns, one is the dollar amount may scare people, but we also got backlash on assigned fund balance too.
Mm-hmm.
So they could likely just, we're not gonna accept an assigned fund balance at all, no matter what the dollar amount is. I, I think people need to understand that we're taking money in our, on a sign and moving into a, a saves account for a very specific use, use, right? Um, I would hope they would accept that, because it is money that's kind of sitting in there, do, we can't have access to it unless the voters give us the rights to do it. This gives us the right to use it for these type of expenses. So I feel like there's a two whammy here, it's the dollar amount and potentially the unassigned, if that's, if that continues to be a bad word, which again, with everything we've been doing and responding and shouldn't be, and we need to get on top of it again. But, um.
I can change it to whatever.
So if it goes to a hundred thousand, what, what does that leave us in the fund balance? It's few only, so I can't make the change.
So, two hundred and seventy-two thousand?
Yeah, it would be, um.
Which would be closer to eleven percent than ten?
Ten nine, yeah, it's ten nine now.
Ten zero nine, yeah.
Yeah.
You're introducing a lot to the town, not you personally, but we're, we're trying to be proactive, right?
Mm-hmm.
That is another learning curve, right? Cause we were reacting before, now we're trying to be proactive, right? So, a lot of these funds are being set up to be proactive.
And then two strikes against us already is the reassessment, which everybody went bonkers over.
Yeah, that's the one I usually.
Tax bills and people got.
That didn't really help.
It didn't, so it changed it.
Ten four now.
To ten four.
To ten point four zero?
Four one, yeah.
Yeah, ten point four one. Um, versus ten point oh nine.
And you're worried about getting close to eight, right? That was your concern?
Hmm.
I mean, eh, great concern, cause we're not gonna have anything to go in here this year.
Nothing. Nothing can deposit it correct.
Again, I'd, I'd bring up that a couple of years ago, if that, if that school had passed, whereas this former superintendent didn't even meet with her to discuss how we were gonna pay for it, we could have been in the red.
Yep.
We would be in default, you know, and I, I, that to me is.
Hand now.
Be a hand.
Bad word.
Right?
Yeah.
It's a really bad word.
Yeah.
We can't put ourselves in that kind of position.
Although I have to say, I'm not concerned with this administration, I think
No.
they will definitely have the conversation and make sure.
The new guy is excellent.
Yeah.
He absolutely is.
Yeah.
It is a breath of fresh air. I'll leave it there.
So what is the board's desire on the capital reserve? Move it to a hundred, leave it at two hundred?
I'm on a hundred. I'm okay with a hundred.
I was thinking one. I was thinking one twenty-five. They could eat a hundred dollars. Try to get that extra in there.
I was a buck fifty, but I was thinking one twenty-five.
The two hundred thousand to me just.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Uh, it's kind of a number of people.
If John will come down, I'll go up, one twenty-five, I'm okay.
Let's go, let's go to one twenty-five.
One twenty-five. Maybe that's good, it's just.
It, it, again, it.
Different amount.
It's like when you see ninety-nine cents versus a dollar, it's the same price. But.
Okay.
Okay.
So that becomes.
So our intent will be on the next meeting to vote all these, hopefully all the wording is correct.
And. Look at that. Ten point three-three, good number.
Ten point what?
Three-three.
Three-three?
All right.
Okay.
All right, I guess we can move on to the twenty-twenty-five budget. This would be where we're at, where we're not at.
Uh, yeah, where we're not at. Um, so, we are watching it very carefully, um, we had a meeting as, um, the department heads, um, last Wednesday, and we talked about really watching any December. Um, you know, originally, because of, we were estimating November, I was, uh, lower with the balance, I was under a hundred thousand dollars, which was making me, um, very concerned. Um, our November is, is closed now, I mean, so the next expenditures will be December. Uh, we've estimated December based on the last three years, um, so now we're looking at more like a hundred and eighty. Uh, but of course, that's, that's an estimate, um, and when bad experience could wipe us. Um, so we're hoping that doesn't happen, and I love Mother Nature, please, no, no.
Please wait.
Yeah, please wait, wait till January.
Week before Christmas. Just the dusting, so it's nice and light.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make it pretty for the kids.
So, that, that's some of our concern. Um, I did wanna say, so we have earned time requests, request to buy back vacation at over forty thou- a little over forty thousand dollars right now. So, that's when we could go to the expendable trust, which has sixty-two thousand in it right now, to bring that money back into the operating budget, um. We tend to try to not do that unless we absolutely have to.
Uh, yeah, we, we should see where, how close.
Cause you gotta reclaim yourself.
Yeah, so that's, that was the other reason for asking for the December twenty-ninth meeting. Same with general assistance, um, you know, the balance is, is twenty in the expendable trust, and we've already spent twenty-six out of the operating budget. We could, if we need to bring some of that into the.
Does the one eighty-three represent the, um, the holdback for the new truck?
No.
So that's fifty off of that, or whatever that is, okay.
Yes.
What's the total, what's the total? We have, um, impact fees that are covering some of it, and then we have bottom line coming out of it, so what's the total amount we have to pay, right?
About a hundred and eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, I would just, I think I would just put the fifty thousand, if that's the number we have holding for the truck, we should put it there and
Okay.
just so we know that it's not one eighty-three, it's more like one twenty or something.
Yeah. And, I mean, again, that's, uh, that's an estimate, um, and I know the department heads are watching their December spend, you know. But, it's going to be more of an issue if it, next year. Cause the gap between default and operating is much larger.
Well, let's think positive.
Can you explain why January, I'm looking at the twenty-twenty-five actual expenses? Why, why is January and July higher? What's going on there?
School payment, maybe. Probably school payment over the summer.
Just the school big payment, okay, that's what I mean, cause I just, I don't, they, those two months stuck out.
Yeah, they're typically higher, uh, school payments than the others, and they're, they tend, we have, tend to have higher school payments in months where we're collecting taxes.
Okay, so, all right. So there's not gonna be a potential cash flow, January seeing a higher amount, that's my question. You don't expect one, okay.
No, and the treasurer, Karen, Karen, the finance director, and, and, uh, Deb, our treasurer, do a great job in watching the balance, um, the treasurer has been, um, taking money and moving it to CDs, which obviously generates a lot more in- interest for the town. Um, so, um, she's been doing a wonderful job with that. And we like revenue.
Okay. Anything else on the twenty-twenty-five budget?
No, unfortunately not.
Okay.
Next up is IT position proposed contract. Steve?
I don't even know where to go with this at this point. We are not gonna move forward with the contract at this time.
Okay.
Cut Kim and Bob?
Yes.
Um, we are asking legal to actually review the contract as well, with some term, uh, verbiage he didn't care for. And we.
Okay, so move it to whenever the next one is, whatever.
We need to post the job. It needs to get posted immediately, because we have five weeks left. It should've already been posted.
My understanding, it can't be posted, cause it wasn't an illegal meeting or illegal vote, so.
Nope.
The board has to decide.
That, that was for an RFP, but the job should've been posted. It should've been posted after the October meeting. Like, we posted the building inspector opening immediately. This shouldn't have sat for five weeks or however long it sat. Should've already been out there.
Uh, the October meeting, there was no action taken other than a vote, it was a two-two tie, right?
Which was to renew the contract, which, which failed.
Right, I understand that, but.
But then there was no.
There was no, there was no vote of the board to take action.
Motion to create a job description.
No, it should've been, it should've been automatic. I mean, it's, every other position in the town has always gone immediately out. It should, it should've gone out right away.
Okay.
So we're behind the eight ball right now.
We will need Kim in her spare time to create a job description for the IT director, have it checked with legal. And then post it as a position. It would not be a contracted, it would be an employed position.
No, we decided that wasn't the way to go.
Go with the contract, go with the contract position.
So it's still a contract position?
Yeah.
Still at twenty-five hours?
We haven't discussed the, the terms yet, but I, that's, that's what I would go for, still, due to the, the the cost factor, I would, I would recommend staying at twenty-five hours. We simply don't have the budget to go for a full-time position.
We have to check the actual hours that have been submitted in the past. Right?
Uh, yes, I believe that legal counsel is reviewing the terminology of the Fair Labor Standards Act. Um, and if it's part-time, it's part-time, it's twenty-five hours, it's not more. Whatever the board says is ours is the hours.
See now, I would rather it go more like the fire chief, where it's set number of hours per year. And the thought behind that is, is if you have an outage, you don't know how long you're gonna work that week. One day you could put easily twenty-four hours in, and that'll burn up your week, and if the outage goes for two days, are you waiting for vendors? I'd, I'd rather.
That's, uh, that's a very good point, um, because.
Don't we as a board have the flexibility to be able to do that, if somebody's worked more here to give them compensated time here?
I think if the contract says twenty-five hours per week, that's what has been agreed upon.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think to select on Gannon's point, if it says twenty-six hundred or whatever.
Yeah, add a, add a rate up per year.
Cause full-time's twenty-eighty, but.
I think it's like thirteen fifty, thirteen hundred or something like that is twenty-five hours.
Per year, then, yeah, there's some flexibility and.
Okay.
And.
So then it would have to be at the discretion of the board, if you're gonna do a total hours, because you don't want somebody to come in and work the first six months, forty hours a week.
Yeah, yeah, I completely agree, that, that is, we'd have to have some safeguards.
Concern.
Yeah.
Can we look at the time cards for the last year to figure out what, what was actually being submitted, because twenty-five may be, or may not be low, but. Yeah, I don't wanna say, if, if it's, the average was thirty-two or thirty-three, and we're saying twenty-five. I, I just wanna see what that is.
Yeah, we all.
So we don't lowball the number.
Twenty-five hours at fifty-two weeks is thirteen hundred hours.
But again, if the average was thirty-three hours, you know, we really have to, we have to bid or whatever, hire somebody that's.
Yeah, that would be seventeen hundred and six, seventeen sixteen.
Getting close to the full-time status.
But that is still under the full-time threshold. When does it go from part-time to full-time? Thirty-seven, thirty-seven and a half?
Forty.
Forty?
That's why she wanted, uh.
Oh, that's why the.
That's why legal counsel wanted the personnel policy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, cause it.
To tie, to see if the FLSA language had to be in there, and, um, so I I believe they were, she was going to inquire, um.
I think, what else do we have?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be six eighty-four per week, so twenty-seven, thirty-six an hour, and if we did eighteen hundred, thirty-five thousand, where does this come up at? Thirty-eight thousand, so we're going to want thirty-eight five. Well, that's after four years, yeah, thirty-five five.
So we haven't, in the past, the board has not wanted to put a dollar figure connected to an employment posting, is that still the will?
Yep, I, I, it's what I would do.
I don't have it in the building inspector posting for that reason.
Yep.
It was a discussion when the person came in.
Yeah, we didn't do it with the police chief, we didn't do it with you, yeah, I think it's the way to go.
You did not, yeah.
Well, we need to get the hours right, so people can decide whether to apply or not.
Yeah, what hours we're asking.
Is it twenty-five hours, or is it thirty-seven, whatever it is? Cause maybe somebody wants a part-time job on top of their job, or maybe they just want a full-time job, I don't know, so. But they can't, they can't make the decision until they know the actual hours, or
Yeah.
a rough estimate.
Okay, so you'll work with legal on that.
Yes, I will, legal's.
Yeah, like, so, my only, my only concern is, need to be able to give them the flexibility, where if they're in that position and they have something going on, they just don't say, I'm at twenty-five hours, I have to leave. You know, they need to, you know, in IT, you just gotta carry through until the, the issue is resolved.
Emergency, yeah.
And just, um, full disclosure is that everybody can apply. Correct?
Ye- yes, but they would need to meet qualifications.
Yes.
Yep, everybody can apply.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Do I need a, I, I guess, legal said I didn't need a motion.
No, no, so.
Right?
She was gonna review it and talk, and then. Bob's point, if we can get a, get something together, so that we could cover ourselves.
So.
Sorry.
Am I, am I just getting it together? And bringing it back to the board with some answers to these questions on the eighth, I'm not posting it.
It sounds like the board wants you to post it.
I think, I think legal said, post it.
She said, go ahead and post it.
All right, on to the next, I guess, have we done with this topic?
Yeah, one second, and she also said to use section three oh for the, the requirements, duties and responsibilities.
Yes.
Just to base it on that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have to get the answer to the part-time.
Yep. Thank you, thank you, John.
All right, next up is a hawker, hawker and peddler's application, Romano's Pizza.
So, Romano's Pizza, um, submitted this hawkers and peddlers application. Um, our understanding is this is for, strictly for a community event, they don't tend to go out to house, um, peddling in Litchfield, um, so based on that, um, conversation um, here, um, within the town, is that this is a community event, and there has been at least one application in the past where the, um, entity was doing it strictly for an event that was, um, being offered to Litchfield residents. Um, and we waived the fee, we are asking for waiver of the fee. Um, they are working, um, with the Litchfield PD on making sure that any, um, permits, um, and, you know, duties from alcohol are applied for. Um, they, obviously, they have their food license, they submitted everything to us, it's all in order, we just would hate to see them.
Where's this from?
They are Spirit of Litchfield Christmas.
Oh, they're gonna, they're gonna be there?
They are going to be there.
I'll make a motion to approve the head, peddlers, yeah, hawkers and peddlers license and waive the application fee.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Motion made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by myself. Any other discussion?
Yes, why is Williams, William Vessels, that's not Italian.
I wondered who that was, I didn't wanna say.
That's Keith.
Really?
Yeah.
It's like George and Francis.
It's our aliases.
Is that his real name?
Yes.
First name.
Okay, learn every day.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero zero.
We'll have some good pizza.
All right, next up is the Citizen Academy, Ms. Kleiner.
Oh, here we go. So, um, we discussed this as, um, at our department head's meeting last week. Um, and it came up, um, when I went to national conference, there was a whole session on this, and many towns, um, our size, or right around our size, were speaking to the benefits of having the Citizens Academy. And of course, we discussed this well over a year ago, we did not get the sign-ups or the interest um, to move forward. We'd like to attempt it again. Um, we talked about dates, we'd actually start the twenty-seventh of January, and go to the first, um, Tuesday in, um, March. We would be educating, you know, each department, would take a night. Um, hopefully, we have enough residents that sign up that wanna understand about town hall. Uh, we put out flower, flyers, we'll have a sign-up right there at the Resource Fair, um, which will be held on January twenty-fourth, um, and we're just gonna really try to promote, um, one of the big, uh, benefits that. Um, one of the big, uh, benefits that other municipalities have seen is these people that come and they learn about it tend to be the people that then will volunteer for boards and commissions, right? They'll get more involved, um, in the town, they'll feel more connected, knowing the department heads, knowing their town officials. Um, so we wanna try it again.
I like it.
Yep.
Yep, let's try it again, that's what happens.
Is this where you go over the financials again and all of that?
Yeah, so each night, um, a department would present.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the first night might actually be like the selectmen, I, finance, you know, we'll all
Mm-hmm.
Join together assessing, um, then the town clerk, the tax collector, P D would be their own night, fire would be their own night. Um, the Litchfield Police Department had one and they did mention it there. And some of those residents, um, were interested and they were gonna reach out and help us promote as well, so. Um, but it, it was very interesting to see a whole session at national conference where other municipalities across the country are doing this.
Mm-hmm.
Found a benefit. Um, that leaves us to.
December twenty-second.
Oh, this one, wants to save the date?
Oh, yeah, so we just wanted to, um, I met with the Litchfield veterans. So as department heads, we had a big meeting on Wednesday and we talked about the resource fair, everyone is in favor. Um, I met with the veterans and we had a great conversation, worked it all up. They asked me to create a save the date, um, I worked on this, uh, this weekend and sent it out to the veterans and they, um, approved it. Um, so if it is okay with the board, we will begin, um, disseminating this. So people save the na- the date and what it is we're talking about when we talk about the resource fair, January twenty-fourth.
How was this information gonna get out?
Um, we'll do social media, we'll do the newsletter, the veterans are going to circulate it. Um, we're gonna ask the superintendent if he'll send it out in his, um, update to parents. We're gonna really try to get everywhere, um, I've gotten some good response from community agencies um, that are going to attend and, uh, so we're really excited about this.
I already have someone email me asking for this and wasn't sure, but I don't believe they're on social media. So I was wondering how else we could get this.
Be up on cable too, so.
Uh, yeah, and the Litchfield veterans are going to, um, come tomorrow, if it's acceptable with the board this evening. Um, and pick up the, uh, proof, so they are going to create flyers. They have a printer, so.
Are they going out to the mail? That's expensive, I'm assuming.
It is expensive.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
We did talk about it.
Yeah.
Um, I think there was some, definitely some interest in sending it in the mail.
Mm-hmm.
But to do a bulk mailing, you're probably talking.
Yeah.
Seven hundred, eight hundred dollars. Just based on what we know from the, uh, voter guide, um. But it, I think it is going to be a really nice event if, um, and let me ask this. So the veterans have developed, they are getting tablecloths with the veterans. Um, and so there was at least a, a request here at the town. Could we order some tablecloths with the Litchfield town seal? So that the town tables have a town tablecloth and the veterans' tables have a veterans' tablecloth. Um, the price of the tablecloth that the veterans got was like a hundred and seventy dollars. And they're not one-time use, they're, we would have them, um, for any town event that we held. Um, but of course, we would need permission to use the town seal on them.
If you're a town doing it, you have the right to print the town seal on anything the town uses, right?
Just said business cards and flyers and dictionary, don't think it's mentioned tablecloths.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to allow the T A to use the town seal on.
Tablecloths.
Tablecloths.
I'll second it. All right, motion made by Mr. Gannon, second by myself, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye. Motion passes four zero zero.
I'm really, really excited about this.
I would say it's gonna be a good event.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of people turned up to the last one, there's a lot of positive feedback.
Yeah, I think that, um, and working with the Litchfield veterans is just an absolute pleasure, let me die.
They push it over.
Yep, so.
All right, next, next up is the, uh, December twenty-second meeting change, we are, we probably already talked about it. Um, the suggestion is we're gonna move it to the twenty-ninth to accommodate the end of the year spend voting and all that kinda thing. Um, any objections? If so, I'll take a motion to move it.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Taking my Mr. Larry, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero zero, so our next meeting will be December twenty-ninth at, at six-thirty. All right, uh, this would be the time for a second public input, but I don't see anybody coming, so.
Matt, you got anything you wanna say?
Oh, yeah. I'll stay quiet.
So I will close that at eight-thirty-two. Um, all right, town administrative report, Ms. Kleiner.
Um, auction at twenty Lock Mill Drive, um, the phone calls. Um, the interest in this property is amazing, um, they had over eighty people visiting, um, last Wednesday. Um, the next, um, public walkthrough is Tuesday, December second, um, from ten to twelve. Um, so, and then December fourth, the auction closes.
This is online too, you can view it online?
All online, um, I have had a number of phone calls. There is a, um, document, a full disclosure on, uh, the McInnes website. The auction company's, that disclosure report lists everything. It was reviewed by our town council, um, so I really suggest people read that report.
Yeah, I got a text message today, it's, uh, over ten thousand views already.
Wow.
It's crazy.
But the home, the home property needs a lot of work, right? Well, we're only, we can only sell it to recoup our back taxes and our fees.
Great question, cause that's the phone call I get the most, right?
It goes to the state.
So what's the back taxes? So, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the bid is set at as a minimum will refund the town all the back taxes owed. The cost that we have incurred on maintaining the property. And the ten percent penalty that the town is required to keep. That is all the town can keep.
Okay.
So when the per, when the bidder purchases the property, the back taxes are paid. They, a lot of people are calling me, asking me what the back taxes are because they assume they have to pay that over the purchase price.
No, that's included in the purchase.
Yeah, um, you know, I don't think, I think it's gonna go for a lot more than.
Do we decide where it goes? Who, who, who's the, who gets the property or does the, the company decide who's?
The company decides its highest bidder.
The highest bidder?
It is the highest bidder. And.
So no preference for Litchfield people?
Nope, highest bidder. And, um, they will close, um, they will walk through the closings and the documents over our legal, uh, council will review them. Um, in answer to, it's a beautiful property and I wanna thank our highway department immensely, they cleaned it all up, um, they did a lot of work. Um, and so I think it is going to make a beautiful home for our fam- our great family.
They'll put some money into it, but it'll be worth it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and there are still items remaining in the home, those get sold with the home then.
Thumbs up.
Um, the R F P for assessing services was issued, um, and the deadline's December twelfth. I've had a couple inquiries, um, the reason I'm putting this on the T A report is because I also received, um, an item. There's a state meeting, um, the assessing standards board and, and the D R A and, and some others that are meeting two weeks. Um, to discuss the shortage of assessors within the state of New Hampshire. So, I, I just caution us because our response might not be that great, um, since this is an item that the state is looking at. And there is a shortage of assessing services, um, in the state, so. Um, the building inspector job is posted, um, and, and I guess I didn't mention, uh, last time cause I've had a lot of people reach out to me, um, the current inspector's last day is December nineteenth. The C I P plan is, um, Mr. Croto from the planning board will be scheduled uh, for your December eighth meeting to present that. It did pass the planning board after a public hearing last week.
How did that go, if you don't mind? Was there any public comment?
No, no, it was.
No.
But a couple of board members had questions which we answered and that, that was it.
Yeah, I don't think there was really that big of a turnout for the, for, in the audience.
No, um, Mr. Stone and Mr. Parker were there.
Yeah. Yeah, that was.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, we already talked about the resource fair, uh, January twenty-fourth, ten to two, I keep saying that. Um, the, there was an inst- an interesting report and if anyone's interested, um, I can email it. But this is directly to the point that the town of Raymond is making. Um, the commissioner of, um, the Department of Environmental Services, uh, put out a whole article on water and the drought and how it remains and how certain towns. Um, and people are having problems with waters in their wells, so, um, it's, they still see it continuing, of course. No snow, shortage of rain, all this doesn't help, um, so.
I don't have a drought in my basement, my little stream's been running.
Oh, okay, Bob's got all the water.
They got all the water, I'm boarding it, I'm gonna sell it.
It might become very valuable. Um, the Litchfield veterans, um, notified us, they wanted you to know that their original, um, refilling was scheduled for December fourth, it has been moved to December fifth, um, middle school had a conflict. And I would like to let you know that I was requested Wednesday as a vacation day.
Enjoy it.
Enjoy the long, long weekend.
Five days off.
Driving?
Five days off.
Oh, five days off, oh, okay.
Staying home on Thanksgiving.
Good for you.
Thank you. Next up is the selectman reports, we'll start out with, uh, Mr. Larry, rec commission.
Yep, uh, rec meets, uh, we actually meet tomorrow night. There's not a lot going on right now, they're still trying to figure out what to do with the talent hall floor. The guy that was supposed to put the stuff, the foam in it, it was going right down through. So my suggestion was to go underneath and screw plywood up underneath it so that it would have something to bite to, but I don't know that they wanna do that, so. Um, that's the biggest impression now. They did cover the heating unit finally, which is, should help, but, but they've had some little things, you know, going on there lately, the bathroom one wasn't working, just the aches and pains, but everything else is going pretty good. Pulled the dock out, which I think was part conservation and part rec, but they were all there. Yeah, we meet tomorrow night, so.
Okay, nothing else? Ms. Queenen?
Hey, how old is Talent Hall anyway?
Nineteen fifty-four it was built.
Seventy-five, okay.
Yeah.
Not bad for that old of a building, right?
It's right around there, yeah.
It's burned once, right?
Yep.
Rich LaSalle's had the, I'm the core of engineers, come in and fix it.
Yep, yeah.
All right.
And the Celtics, couple of players back in the day used to hold camps there.
All right, SIP, uh, we, I got, uh, you already said most of it, Kim, public hearing last week, board of selectmen the eighth. The SIP report was posted here earlier, I just don't see it here anymore, you had the spreadsheet here, but that's okay.
I did.
Yeah, that's all right, I just wanted to know if they wanted to see it ahead of time, it was, but that's okay, it'll be on the portal. Uh, let's get this one out of the way, economic development committee, I sent out a poll on November eighteenth to say, please, when can we meet? We need this final report voted on, you know, we need a quorum, I'm just begging. Uh, we, right at the moment, as of today, I sent out another poll, uh, we have three lined up for Wednesday night or, or December first, so I, again, I just need one more. I don't know, if we can't get one more, maybe the board of selectmen might just say, just look at it preemptive, you know, a, a draft version or something. Just, we've gotta get this done. So if we can meet this week, which is Wednesday, six-thirty here, we will hopefully approve that and move on and close it down, um, and move it on to the board of selectmen to make some decisions. Um, so anybody on the committee out there, please show up tomorrow. I mean, Wednesday, excuse me, the twenty-sixth.
Show up tomorrow.
Um.
There'll be a rec meeting.
This is what, that was the Tarnfall last year, it was the night before Thanksgiving and then it was Christmas and then it just, you know, it just turned into a fiasco. All right, N R P C, um, just a reminder, we all, I'm sure know in the room about websites having to be updated by April and I know you're all working on that. Um, the housing bill one sixty-eight, Kim, thank you very much, you took care of that one. Um, heard about three other towns that were doing that, so it sounds like it's a hot one there. Unfortunately, uh, uh, fortunately, we went over the safe street reports where we look at fatalities and really tough injuries and try to make predictions for the next, you know, five to ten years out. Unfortunately, I saw a bad accident on the way over here, which didn't look too well, but they do monitor that and try to give advisory on which road should be looked at for that. Um, sidewalks came, became an issue, a lot of town, there were three that are starting to, um, if, if people go in front of the planning board and they agree to pay for sidewalks, I think the town, uh, some towns have changed the ordinances that they'll take the money for the sidewalks, but they might decide where they wanna put the sidewalks in the town overall. Trying to get walkability to schools and that kind of thing. So, because what's happening is this, this pan piece will have a sidewalk, this piece will have a sidewalk, that piece will have a sidewalk, so it's like, they're just, you know, not connected. So that would be a zoning change here, but.
That's a tough one, though.
It is a tough, so, cause again, it goes back probably to the board, but then who maintains the sidewalk, it turns into another whole discussion, so.
You pay for a sidewalk in front of your business and the town puts it somewhere else.
Right, so that would be voters, yeah, so that, yeah, that's just what other towns are looking at, I didn't say we had to here. But I can see the patchwork would, could kinda be a problem. Um, you talked about the circumvental highway with the fifty-nine parcels, uh, already. The last thing I'll talk about there is M S four, um, yeah, I heard that same sound when that came up. It's starting to become very expensive for towns to remain compliant. And the gentleman from Wilton, I, when I run the meetings, I like the round table because I do learn a lot what's happening in our region. M S four Wilton, a lot of their urban downtown are in buildings that are two hundred years old, right near the river. And they're saying that he actually loses sleep worrying about if he has to replace those drains and all of that because it'll be millions of dollars and they just don't know how they would come up with the money, so, uh. So, I think maybe this, uh, conference on December second is another issue with, especially with water. So a lot of towns don't know, do we collect impact fees or how do we handle if we have this, it's just becoming very costly. So, we do have some in place, but maybe. So, we do have some in place, but maybe not enough for what we're needing, right? It's stressing our town.
Yeah.
It's stressing, it sounds like going around the table, it's stressing a lot of people. We did have a discussion about the DOT. Should they raise the tolls a dollar, or should they maybe raise the gas? We, we were only advisory only, the room was very split. So, I said we're gonna put it off till next month, let people think about that. The governor can, can raise the tolls, the legislature has to approve a gas tax. And even with the toll raised, there's only a few projects that would be done. So that's ongoing. That's beyond our realm, but we, we decided as, as the region to just not answer right now. She did ask all of the regions, you know, for input, but we said at this point, it's, there's no consensus, they're not even close. PFAS, they delivered their sixth, sixth report. Um, can I send that to you so we can get, do we have a sec? I'll mail you that. Uh, that's Housing Bill seven thirty-seven from, I think, two thousand nineteen, they reused the numbers. So, let me get that up to you. It, it's only nine pages, so it's a nice summary for everybody to read and look at. Okay. My big takeaway from there, and it also, there was a cancer study that went around, but that was only Merrimack, I, I wanna see. I'm still waiting for the one from Dartmouth. I think they're closing it, but trying to get funding phase two. It was very clear the last meeting, this, this housing bill that we're working on, which is RSA one twenty-six A, colon seventy-nine dash A. Our mandate was to look at water for PFAS, and now it's becoming very apparent that we did that, but now it's really something, some, another group is gonna be needed to look at soil, cuz they're related, but, um, I didn't know you could burn soil and get PFAS out of it. There's other ways to clean soil. So what they're saying is, we have sixty-seven miles that has been designated in the PFAS area for planning boards, maybe you just have to acknowledge it's there, but maybe don't move the sand, you know, move the dirt, you know, so there's no legislation there yet, but, or maybe clean up, but it didn't seem like it was gonna go anywhere for a while, but just be aware that they're, they're turning their focus from water to maybe soil might be coming up. But this group will still be going on for another few years on the water side.
There's a job in Merrimack where the soil is contaminated, it's not that far from, um, the old site there, I think it may. The guy wanted to move the soil, it would've cost him two million dollars to move the soil, and they'll take it someplace.
So I don't know what it costs to clean soil, or maybe you just have to acknowledge it's there, you know, could be that.
Is to put it in the corner.
Put it in the corner, yeah, but definitely don't move it somewhere else into the state.
Squirt dirt.
Alright, so I.
General Sherman.
So, um, I put, Kim, cuz you're, I'm gonna see you tomorrow since you're out Wednesday, to, for the final sixth report, I'll send that to you. I also want to send to you the economic development report for, for the meeting that hopefully we have on Wednesday, the final. We did everything they said, just to prove at this point. Uh, let's see, um, I think that's, I'm gonna hold off on another item until we get it on to the, you know, our next meeting for discussion. Alright, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Gannon?
Uh, yeah, so CIP was last week, we finalized the warrant, uh, I'm not CIP, it's the planning board. Once again, CIP, a lot of discussion on CIP, so we reviewed the CIP. Finalized a warrant, articles for the ADUs, uh, as well as the temp signage. There is discussion going on now with, um, solar and drafting ordinance because right now we do not have any ordinances around solar. And we're having discussions or a work session on duplexes and the defin, definition of duplexes.
Anything else?
That is, that was it. The next meeting is December second, so next week.
So I, Budget Committee, they had a meeting two weeks ago about, at least for, right after our last meeting, a hundred percent focused on school at this point. Obviously, I think one question that came up was around rec and there, there, there upon in the fields, and the use of by the schools, that's, I know you guys are talking through that, so that's on its way. The next meeting is not till the fourth. FIC was conflict with the Budget Committee, so I wasn't able to attend both, but they're still focused on the, uh, the project at hand and, and kinda going through the, what the options are. And that was it for me.
The, the issue with Dare upon is, they wanna use it for all these other sports, and it's the only dedicated girls' softball complex in town, the only one. Everybody wants to use it for lacrosse, for soccer, for this, for that, and, um, we're trying, we're trying to curb that. It's, it's, it's the girls' field, it's a little girls' field.
Yeah, I think the way it came up with Budget Committee was that there's a twelve thousand dollar increase in their busing, and that they were very saddened by the fact the town is forcing this on the school. And my counter was, there's a twelve thousand dollar increase somewhere, whether it's increase in maintenance and kinda conflicts the over there versus that, so it's not really an increase per se, but.
Well, we addressed in, in the spring, when we first decided that this was gonna be for the girls' only, Lacrosse Kane Middle School wanted to play there the rest of the season. And then it was understood, and they said that they would figure out how to address it down the road. So I don't think they addressed it, you know, at all, and they just, you know, wanna use it. I don't know how it costs twelve thousand dollars to take the kids to Sawmill when you had to take them to Dare.
Something about the bus and their contract, that it's not a after-school bus, it's a, I don't know, it was, the whole dialogue is there, and I believe, I know the rec commission's addressing it, and I'm sure the school's still trying to figure it out too.
We're so stressed on fields right now that.
Yeah, I think that's the bigger issue, right?
And Sawmill has a lacrosse field.
Yeah, it probably has more, eh, more time available to it too, based on the size of it too, so. I, I mean, I, I, I tend to agree with this decision, I, as I said, Dom, it's the rec commission's decision, it's not, they wanted to come to the board and stress that they didn't, that they didn't feel it was correct. The Budget Committee wanted us to take it up as a, and, the rec commission's in place to manage those properties, and they're gonna do what's best. I did have a conversation with, um, Chris Burns about it, he gave me some more background, so if it comes up again, I'll have a little more detail, but it's their, it's your guys' decision, so.
On that point, didn't Mr., didn't Selectman Larry have another item that you made a motion for on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, um, the remote control club.
Oh, yeah, you got that one. It's right below the, uh, non-public, it's not gonna happen, so. So, yeah, ro, uh, yeah, so that's it for the selectman reports, yeah, I'm sorry, when you go back to that. So I'm aware of the requests, and what's, what's, you Brian, what about?
Yeah, it was, um, John Hayes, who's a lifelong resident in the town, um, he's looking for a, a place, they have a, they have a club, it's a remote control airplane and what, helicopter club, I guess.
They used to fly in Hudson, I believe, or some, someplace around there. They used to fly in Hudson before.
Yeah, they used to fly in Hudson.
At the old dump, but that now the dump is being converted to something else.
They can't do that anymore, but they'd like to come to Litchfield, and they came to rec a while ago. And we sent them to go see, um, the McQuestons, uh, because they wanted a piece in, where the river accesses, but not one that, um, was really well. It, it doesn't grow crops real well there, and, and Matt, he, he told them that, um, but Matt also told him that he couldn't, he couldn't legally lease him the spot.
Cuz it's town property.
Because it's town property, so he had to come to us, and I, I hooked him up with Kim, and, um, they've been talking a little bit, and you've done some.
This is also conservation property, and conservation doesn't want it neither.
I, and I just wanna be clear, I was not talking to him about conservation property. What, I brought it to the department head, some of the department heads, um, and spoke to Joan as well to see if there was other town property, um, and there really isn't that we could find that would be cleared enough. I think that's why they're looking at the conservation property, is this property is cleared and, and, yeah, fields. If anyone else knows of any town property that's cleared, um, without wires, cuz that's the other thing we found, if it was cleared, it has, you know, utility wires, can't have that either.
Did they go in front of conservation and ask?
Yes.
And conservation declined to make it, or?
I believe conservation sent them to talk to the McQuestons.
Uh, rec, I think rec did, cuz they came to us first, they thought it was rec property.
Yeah.
When I spoke to Joan today, she was going to reach back out to Matt Hoffman, the chair, and see if maybe they wanted to bring Mr. Hayes back in to talk to him some more. But I think everyone's trying to, you know, come to some resolution to find a, a spot.
Yeah, I know they, they spoke to rec, see, to see if they could use some of the Dorosha property, but that is actively farmed. And on one side, and then on the other side, I don't think there's enough clear, clearance to get it going. I know they went to the rec and talked about Sawmill, but that's constantly, it's always in use, it's, as you said, there's really no parcel in town that's big enough and wide enough without, have had wires.
So what's the downside of conservation land, use the, the property adjacent to river access, other than maybe the homes around it?
No, it's on, it's on the riverside of the road, so really, there's only a couple houses on the outside, and Mr. Lynch's house, but.
You can take that out.
You could tell him that.
I will.
I mean, my understanding is it's just an acre, and there's thirteen down there?
Yeah, it's at least, yeah.
I, I don't know, I, I guess that's a good conversation for Mr. Hayes to have with ComCom.
So if that, I, I wasn't impressed, maybe I already went to ComCom, but maybe, like you said, have Matt be aware of it, and, or have Mr. Hayes reach out to Matt to coordinate a conversation with con, conservation. Can't imagine why, if they're allowing it to farm, why they can't strip off an acre to just start at that point, they just want a dirt runway, this is hot packin'.
I mean, I'm not aware, but I was, I, I believe that Mr. Hayes was told there was a section of that land that is very dry.
That's what I think Mr. Queston, the Queston was saying, yeah. So he doesn't, well, it doesn't grow anything on it cuz he can't, or it doesn't, doesn't grow very well, is what I hear.
But then, um, Joan indicated to me there might be some question as how you get to that part of the parcel.
River access then, walk over to it? Park at River Access and walk, I don't know where it is in the parcel, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know how far, I mean, if you're walking ten acres, that might not be great, but.
Fly it.
I don't know if anyone can see this, but it's, it's right off of three A, the PC's talking. I just sent this to the board too. It's, it's an image that Mr. Hayes sent.
They're fun to watch.
They are fun, and they have quite the club, and, and, and they raise revenue too, so, I mean, they, they, they're not just asking to use the field for free.
They do a lot of education.
And they do a lot of education stuff.
Yeah, with youngsters and.
The kids love it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only concern I'd have, like, if they're doing it at Sawmill, they, it makes a lot of noise in these houses right there. That would be concerning, but on a large farm field, it's mu, more muffled.
Well, we looked at, like, behind, um, the highway, cuz we didn't know originally how much space they needed, but that, there's not enough space there.
No, there's not, and I think, cuz you have the range maybe, but that's not still enough, not enough space, and then you get active stuff going on.
So, unfortunately, I, I think going back to ComCom is the best avenue.
It probably is, yeah.
Yeah, so you're gonna reach out to Matt then and just coordinate the.
Yes, I know Joan was, but I'll confirm with her that she did.
And that even, they'd be willing to come in and talk to us too, if need be.
The only problem I have is, there's nothing we can do, we don't, we don't have any town land that we're in control of that's cleared. We have lots, we have lots that is either wetlands or it's got tree lines. Hopefully the conservation sees the same easiness to use it, and it's good use for land, it's not being, not being leached. Okay. Alright, so that was our last business item, apologize for missing that, put it way too far down my, my book here.
Good thing Kim reminded me, cuz.
Got to. Alright, so I will, um, I guess we'll, motion to adjourn, we have no other business tonight, right? Am I missing anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn at, what time is it? Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
And I'll second. Motion made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by myself, all those in favor say aye, aye. So we're now adjourned, the meeting, our next meeting will be December eighth. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy the family time.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.